Welcome, everybody. To the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierceaw, Texas. Today is September the 5th at 6:00 PM at the Pierceaw Public Library. Roll call, please.
Mary Moore. Robert Villarreal.
President.
Richard Gander.
President.
Sonia Hernandez.
Here.
Brenda Trevino.
Here.
Julián Hernández.
President.
Ben Bristow.
Here.
Galen Frazier.
Here.
We have four. Notice again that this special meeting of the above name Commissioners Court in Dillie on the 5th of September, 2018, 6:00 PM, Pierceaw Library, Pierceaw Public Library, Pierceaw, Texas, at which time the following subjects will be discussed with. And also, I have their location and place, and we just want to go and do it there.
Let's let them call their order, we'll do it all at once.
All right, so. And we can have a floor, we have Commissioner Nato, Commissioner Lannan, Commissioner Flores. Do that for us.
Senator Hill.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of City of Dilly, Texas, Texas, will conduct a special meeting Wednesdays, September 3rd, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Pierceaw Public Library, located at 200 East Street, East Street, Pierceaw, Texas, on the 061, at which time the following subjects will be discussed with. Roll call.
Your question?
Heaven up. Never asked you, by no means.
David Jordan.
Marita Concepcion.
You're lacking one for four. Okay, did she say you're lacking one for four?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. Do you want to continue, Joseph, or the other nation will go from there?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, bless all of those that are in attendance today. Enlighten us to make good decisions for our counties and our cities. In Jesus Christ, we pray.
Amen.
We look into the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We open our workshops, so our councils will do a motion to open our workshop. Do you guys open workshops, or you just go in?
No.
Do you guys open, you don't have to go in for a minute. Please, you have to get a motion over the workshop and prove that we can get started.
Motion to open the workshop.
So the second. All in favor?
You guys want to talk about what you got?
Roll it out. Our county attorney.
What's the question as far as what bids were received? Do you guys want me to give them the range of bids that were received, or explicitly tell them the value of the bids that were received?
I think we discussed it, give it the range.
We received three bids, the companies are AMR.
Allegiance.
Allegiance and.
Alamo.
Alamo. And the bids range from $4,000 to $6,000. $400,000 to $600,000 a year. Sorry, just a little difference.
And the one that was expiring was $400,000, did you hear?
No, it was.
$588,000.
Now, again, there's a scoring process that all the bids have to go through. Obviously, there's more to an RFP than just a dollar figure. Considering they just opened them up today, and they are all pretty lengthy proposals, it's going to take them a while to chew through them and score. We're hoping to score them next Wednesday and then select the winner at that time. So these bids have not been scored? We just opened them up at 3:00. So is there any information? Services provided? Again, what we are asking for, and we can't verify yet at this time if they have provided everything that is asked for in our specifications. But what our specifications called for was a full-time ambulance. I forget the designation, but it's the one, it's above ALS, it's one with a paramedic onboard. So they would be able to do more than just basic life-keeping services. There would be an ambulance stationed full-time in Dilly, an ambulance stationed full-time in Pierceaw, and an ambulance backup as well, should one of those ambulances have to go on a run. That backup ambulance would slide in to take the spot of whichever ambulance was out of
I think we need to specify that these bids are, that we're receiving, we already are furnishing the site where they're located. We're furnishing some of the ambulance, that's correct? So we already have, we already have money.
We are furnishing the rental space for both companies.
We still have ambulance that used to be.
I know that we initially did, I don't know if they've replaced them with their own. I think they've upgraded and they're theirs right now, but initially, we did start them with ours.
I have a question. Who's footing the bill?
This year, the county footed the bill. As I'm sure you're aware, we had signed an interlocal agreement between all three local government entities back three years ago. I don't really remember, recall the exact date, but the county was footing 60%, Pierceaw was footing 30%, and Dilly was footing 10%. This last year, both cities of Dilly and Pierceaw cited economic hardship, and the Commissioners Court decided to, for this past year, to waive those contributions to the county.
Is the tax entity, the hospital district, in all the uniform or fashion?
At one point, the hospital district was paying a fee of $25,000, or was it $35,000?
It was actually, I believe it was $30,000.
$30,000. I'm not the numbers person, as I'm sure you can tell. But that contract since lapsed a number of years ago, we've since settled that matter out of court. But right now, the hospital district does not pay anything into that, into that fund, and my understanding is I don't think they have any intention on doing so. I'll leave the reasons to Mr., to Andy here to explain.
I thought that was the reason why the hospital district was initiating in the first place to pay for indigent care, mobile services, and what have you.
The hospital is in charge of providing for indigent health care within the bounds of Frayo County.
Correct.
But that's separate from EMS services.
But EMS services being a, all three of these are private firms, they would bring patients to the hospital, therefore, they become a referral source, and that becomes problematic for the district. To pay for it. It's by referrals. If this was not a private company, if we were doing something local, something like LaSalle, where it's part of the county, then the district can be a part of that. But since it's a private service, it's problematic. So I have a question. So if we created a local nonprofit, would the hospital district actually contribute to? They could. They could. Mr. Senator?
Yes.
For this year, the council has kind of looked at the bill for this EMS.
Well, right now, we haven't decided, the county hasn't made the decision to put any of it.
Oh.
I mean, we're considering it. And again, I kind of want to pull the range back here. You guys don't have the benefit of your councils here, and so while I certainly don't mind interjecting with information should my client need it, I kind of want to stick more to the background in this meeting if I could, just to respect all the other parties that don't have the benefit of council here. But as of right now, the Commissioners Court hasn't decided to, at this point yet, to provide EMS service for the upcoming year. I mean, I believe that is my client's intention, but you'd have to ask my calling. What's the breakdown in terms of percentages that Dilly, Pierceaw pays, and the county pays?
When the agreement was initiated, it was, it was based on calls that we had received, and there was some analytical to it, and 60% of the calls came within the city of Pierceaw. 30% was within the city of Dilly, and the rest was in the unincorporated areas, which was the county. At the time, city of Pierceaw said, "We're not paying 60%, we'll pay 30%, we'll pay half of that." And Dilly said, "Well, we're not going to pay, if they're going to pay half, we're going to pay half, so we'll pay half." And that was kind of what was brought to the table, it was agreed upon, and that's where, that's how we came about those percentages. And that's what we did pay. So on the $588,000, when the cities were helping, the county's portion was $352,800. Pierceaw contributed $176,400, and Dilly was, at 10%, was $58,800. And that would cover the $588,000. Again, the current budget year they were in, the county has paid 100% of the $588,000.
That, that our local agreement was specific to that contract, though, right?
I don't recall. It probably, I mean.
I mean, it's going to terminate in about, I don't know, 15 days, so it's, yeah. I mean, I don't know if it specifically referenced the contract itself, but it's going to expire shortly.
It was, again, it was based on the services we had at the time, so I would assume so.
Okay, another question. The calls that are made out to the county, is that what the county pays for? How would that determine?
I don't understand your question.
Well, you said that Dilly paid $58,000, we were supposed to pay $176,000, based on the volume of calls. So my question is, does the county pay only for county calls outside of city limits? Outside of the, I know that y'all pay more than that. I think there's a misunderstanding. What Tracy said was initially, the proposal was based on the call information we had at that time, which placed 60% of the calls in Pierceaw, 30% in Dilly, and the rest in the county. It was proposed that everybody pay a rate based on that then. It wouldn't fluctuate based on month per month. Unfortunately, I mean, well, fortunately, depending on what side of the bargaining table you were on, Pierceaw agreed to 30, Dilly agreed to 10, on a yearly basis. So Pierceaw would only pay 30 based upon whether its call volume went up or down, county and Dilly vice versa. David Jordan. We kind of asked for the floor, I don't know protocol, but anyway, I wanted to tell the county again, last year, when we came, you guys at this particular time, we were a little bit underfunded, and so we still had a year to go on that contract, and you guys graciously allowed us to do that with that. So I definitely wanted to express from my position, thank you again for doing that last year, that certainly helped us. As we move forward, I know the contract is going to expire in 15 days, so, you know, service needs to be provided to the citizens, obviously, and I think we're all kind of searching, who's the responsible party? Who's going to be the one that's going to do that? So, you know, my interpretation and the purpose of this meeting is to try to get that figured out. I understand, and just to be clear, when you say your client, you're talking about?
Frayo County.
Yeah, right, the Commissioners Court. But I understand, and I know you just opened those, so you haven't determined yet which of those three that you're going to pick, but obviously, from the perspective, it looks like the ball's in your court, you know, deciding what you guys are going to do. So it'd be good just to hear what everybody's intentions are, or what they're capable of doing, as kind of the city of Dilly. We're right smack dab in the middle of budget, and we're squeezing, and, you know, doing numbers, and looking at that, so we really don't have a lot of time before, I think we set our budget on the 17th of this month. So certainly, just some roundtable conversation about who needs to do what, and who can do what. We'll be here. Well, again, just for the benefit of everybody who might not know, and again, please talk to your council and verify this with them. But unfortunately, the legislature has kind of left us in a quandary in which nobody is assigned the duty of who to provide emergency medical services for the residents. It says county may piggyback off a city if a city does it, it says city may piggyback off a county if a county does it, but the legislature has not said, here is who's responsible for EMS. So, yes. So what about our emergency district? What role does that? The emergency district that we formed only covers fire protection. Now, there is an option to have a referendum and a vote to create another ESD that would then take over the duties of performing EMS services, but that's a, again, that's a long process that we cannot take on with this short notice, that would have to be something long-term. But right now, it only covers fire.
So just out of curiosity, the RFP was only a one-year RFP, though, right?
Excuse me?
The RFP you guys just did was for one year.
Well, it was for one year with extensions. So, yeah, I mean, yes.
So theoretically, an ESD for EMS service could be on about next year?
That is what my client decided? I have a question. If Pierceaw and Dilly are in the county, what is the distinction that you want, based your position? The distinction? Yeah. You're in the county, but what separates you out as an entity from Pierceaw and Dilly? We are laying out these legal boundaries, obviously. The law, and again, I'm not speaking about the ethics, I'm not an ethics person, I'm a lawyer, okay? I deal in laws, the laws aren't always ethical and moral, okay? All I can tell you is the laws of the state of Texas state that the county does not have to provide ambulance services within the boundaries of the cities, absent some sort of agreement between the parties. And you can make all the moral and ethical arguments you want with that, I know we've heard them time and time again from members of the city council, and I respect those arguments, but that is not a question for me. So are county residents taxed a little differently than ours is? Are they taxed the same as city residents? Again, I am not the tax assessor-collector, but I would believe that they are taxed the same. They are taxed the same, so we're paying the same taxes? And again, I understand your argument, but that's not a legal argument, so I'm not, I'm not going to debate that, you can direct that to me. Well, I just put on the table, because I would like county to consider, maybe including the cities in your overall decision, as you make your decision, to provide services for the county, you're a part of the county. I would like you to consider that. We appreciate y'all helping us out last year. The city of Dilly and Pierceaw are crunching for numbers, and we just feel that we appreciate it.
So is there any way for the city of Pierceaw and the city of Dilly can help us out then, at all?
Because we are just, like I said, we're hammered out on the budget, and, you know, there's been a number of things that popped up. Anyway, we've all, we've all had, I'm sure Dilly does, I'm sure the county does. And again, we've still got to work a little bit with our medical, but it is a razor in where we are even before this moment. And we've done some things, we've got a written paper, we've done some annexation, we've got another annexation, that we haven't approved yet, but we believe we will, and that next year will be an game changer for us, and create an, here, create an environment where, you know, that can certainly be realistically considered. But I'd love to invite you to our budget meeting, so you can hear and see the numbers. It is just razor-thin. And, you know, Joseph, Dilly, there are great points, you know that we can debate, but still, the fact of the matter is the citizens' needs of coverage. You know, we need, we, elected bodies of the county need, we'll provide that for the citizens. But this year is just going to be very, very difficult for us to do that. It's just, we're, we have no reserves, and that's scary in itself. But I'd love to invite you guys to come to our budget meeting, so you can see that that's not just an unwillingness at this point, it's very, it's almost that we're not capable of providing that, without some radical changes, further cuts to staff.
I had another, what really concerns me is that, you know, our citizens, our county residents as well, and they do pay county taxes as well, plus on top of that, they pay city taxes. And, you know, I just feel like it's unethical that the city of Pierceaw and the citizens of Dilly pay extra, pay more into the call for, to pay for this EMS service, if we are already contributing money to the county, you know, and I just feel like our citizens are paying double, you know. That's been brought up every time we have a debate, you keep coming back to that same scenario, to paying double. But still, you're looking for citizens, you typically do things about them. I even ask them when your family members need EMS, and it's not a daily. And I do. And I do. And again, wait, I'm not finished yet, but also, I know everybody's thinking about money and all that, too. We went through the same thing also, especially with the jail. Who's in the jail mostly? The city of Pierceaw. They're contributing more people to the jail, and yet, they're not paying a lot of money for having the people housing there either. So we're just going to also try to keep it up to money. If not, we'd be in a world of hurt, not necessarily just the county of Pierceaw itself, when you're all bringing in the finances of the exalt, where are you going to transport it to? So everybody's in a crunch, we just have to tie your belt, again, that's the same, you have to tie some others to the county.
So, so I understand that, but the citizens that live inside the city pay the same taxes that the people that outside the city pay for the detention center we run. And then on top of that, when we take an inmate, then we pay additional money for that as well, so we're paying, we're paying extra there, too. But so there's all the other stuff. All the roads in the county, the people that live inside the city are paying to take care of those roads, but when your county residents come into town to take their kids to the school, or to go to the courthouse to take care of their business, or, they're not paying for any of the roads they're utilizing in town. You know, they're not, they're not paying for any of the infrastructure that we have in town, but our city residents are paying for all the infrastructure outside of town as well. And so, you know, if we want to start talking about imbalances, it's going to be pretty easy to show that the imbalance is against the citizens that live inside the city, and not against the people that live in the county. Because everything that gets done outside of the city limits, the people that live here, 65% of the people that live in the county live here, and their tax dollars are going, all that work outside the city limits as well. But the other services, anything else we want to talk about, if we want to talk about EMS, if we want to talk about the detention center, whatever else we want to talk about in those services, they're already paying a part of that, too, because they're paying county taxes. So citizens here pay for everything, a portion of everything that the county does, but then when the county people come into the city to utilize the services in the city, the county residents aren't paying for that. That's all borne by the people living here inside the city. You know, and I would wonder, on the ambulance contract, any accident that occurs inside the city of Pierceaw, that's not necessarily a Pierceaw resident. The majority of the traffic's here in town, so if there's a car wreck, the majority of the car wrecks are in town. That can be county residents, it can be people from San Antonio, it can be people from anywhere, that's not necessarily a Pierceaw citizens that are being, that those services require. If somebody stayed in a motel there, I mean, that's not somebody, that's not a Pierceaw resident to pay taxes if they have to call for an ambulance service. But everybody receives a benefit, including the county, for those people being there, because you get sales tax off those expenses. So, I mean, there's a benefit all the way around for the stuff that happens here to everybody, but then when the citizens here have to pay extra for those things, it just, that's where the imbalance seems like it's pretty, pretty difficult. You know, I ran, I ran a county before I came here, everybody knows that. 25% of our county budget went back into the county seat every year, because that's where, and it was almost the exact same proportion, about 65% of the residents lived inside that city. We built roads in that city, we built parks in that city, we built walking trails in that city, we built bike trails in that city. We did because that's where the revenue base was at, was inside the city. So it just, you know, and if you look at surrounding counties around us, that's the way a lot of surrounding counties do it, too.
Well, if you bought all that knowledge from wherever you were at, where is that here? You're not showing it yet.
I'm not running the county, I'm running the city, I'm trying to do what I can with the city.
Well, if you got all the knowledge, why can't we have invested in the city?
We have invested in the city.
Well, again, I'll go back a little bit. I live in the city, I have city taxes, county taxes, but I'm, you know, spending money wisely. Where I need, if I need an ambulance for my family, I want the city to have an ambulance substitute. And again, I say, I pay city taxes, too.
Okay, so you've already invested. You've already invested.
I've already invested, yeah, and I'm not against having the city using my tax money to help with the EMS.
Are you against having the city benefit from your road fund, and having some of the roads in the city redone from that road fund?
The roads are being taken care of, whether it's the county or the city.
But you see my point? The people that live in the city are paying for those roads that are getting done in the county.
Well, again, through my taxes, all right?
Yeah, through the taxes.
Because again, so I'd rather have my taxes also being spent with the EMS, than just the roads that you're talking about.
Yeah, but those taxes you're paying aren't doing any of the roads in the city, they're all going outside the city limits.
Not all.
The taxes that you pay to the county are paying for city roads?
Well, I'm talking about the city, you're talking about city taxes that I pay.
Sure.
Yeah, they're being spent well on the city, for the roads.
Everything, every penny we have left over, was being spent on roads.
Well, I haven't seen any changes like that, ever. We need to get type in what we're talking about, if the cities can't be able to jump us with the EMS or not.
Senator Mayor. For the record, Mayor Moore, 634, you're right. Certainly recognize that there's inequities, you know, that we could probably hammer on forever and ever about some of the things that aren't necessarily fair or safe for each other, but the problem still remains, and, you know, it is what it is. And so the good thing about what I see here is the three bodies are together trying to work this out, and that is that the ultimate goal is to find a solution. So although there, we could probably never find a perfect plan, the fact that we're all here together is major accomplishment in my mind, and the two of us need to keep our eye on the ball in solving this problem. So to take you to the topic of what we can do specifically about EMS, I think it would be best for us all to try to figure this out. I understand, too, going back, you've got a high side, Joseph, I mean, you can range, but if we use that as a benchmark, you know, it's not going to be more than that, right? I mean, because those are the RFP, and it's going to be one of those three, that's safe to say. I think that's a fair assumption. So the highest one, is it 600 even, is it 600 change? Is it 600 even? That's a fair assumption, I think. Okay, so it's the highest benchmark, well, I mean, could we, I mean, want to make a poll of what we can do. City of Dilly, what do you guys think?
I want to see what Dilly thought.
Well, we're still with economic hardships, like passengers, we're either considering if the county, that's the same thing as passengers, or maybe a fat rate, something that's at a 10%, you're not for choosing to pay. You know, like I said, the budget, the news event, the several workshops, is going to boost rate on us, so I'm citing it on our issues. The county considers, you know, the same as passengers, we'd be pretty nice to.
And what we can consider the same way, too, is, because this is your, you know, we've got an election, who knows who's going to be sitting up here next year or not, so certainly, any one of us individually can't promise anything, but, you know, one thing that I think would definitely be good, if these three bodies were to meet, you know, we could certainly look at it again next year to see if there's a possibility of us assisting with this in some way. And again, I do, I realize, and I've heard all the arguments, I know it's not completely equitable, you know, there's some things that you can look at and say they're a lock side, and still, in the desire to work together to. look at and say they're a block side. And still, in the desire to work together to accomplish something. Again, maybe, maybe the silver lining here is this is just for a year, and then we can meet again in a year. But, but if things go like we think they're going to be going, we're going to be in a much better position a year from now. And I, and I know from my perspective, not from the county's perspective, but in, in an effort to get along with the city of Dilly and the county, I'd be certainly more than willing to help subsidize this at some level, from my perspective only, not from the county. But it is going to be very difficult for us this year.
I have a question for the chairman.
Yes.
Under the, under the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 28, Section 3 says that the hospital district may provide mobile emergency service. How is that set up? Do you know in other cities?
That hasn't already set up, can we?
Yes.
Is your question regarding how is that?
Well, my question was that earlier we discussed that because we, we couldn't do it currently, right? Can you elaborate on that?
Well, the district cannot participate with, this is, these are private companies. And they are referral sources to the hospital, they're bringing pieces to the hospital. So the district cannot participate in that.
Because they're private companies?
Correct.
Will we not pay them the same way we pay the public company?
Yes, but being that they are private organizations, that prohibits the district being able to, to do that.
Is that within your charter, within your hospital, that I find it's very, very expensive?
No, there's a lot of laws about what a hospital can and can't pay for. Hospital cannot pay for referrals. There's a whole lot of laws about that. And that's where this is.
So how, how does the Texas Health and Safety Code provide for an emergency mobile service for its residents? It's one of the responsibilities that I'm reading here, that is, it should be provided by the district.
Well, I believe it says the hospital district may provide.
It may provide?
But not through a private company.
So it would be a company that you own or?
Yes.
All right. I know at my point, the district did provide EMS service years ago, before your coming.
Before my time.
Now, we're talking about the taxing entity.
Yes, the hospital district.
Association, but so it's possible that taxing entities' funds cannot be used for private services? Is that what you're saying? Because the tax dollars derived from the, whatever it is, I mean, it's only, I don't know, my head, a couple hundred thousand a year. And that, that the district gives to the association, those funds can't be used for that? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not really following you.
Well, Rio County has a hospital district that raises taxes. And it's, whatever it is, but not a whole lot, a couple hundred thousand, but that's what is paid through the hospital association. And it was created, remember, 25 years ago, to save the local hospital?
Actually, the hospital association pays the hospital district to run the hospital. That's what the district owns.
The district gives the money to the hospital. And that, that, so what you're saying is the month, the tax money, so we're on the same page with the tax money, it's charged from the citizens, that cannot be, if that's what you're saying, cannot be used to private pay in EMS?
That's my understanding.
He would have more information about, he would have more information regarding whether it could be sourced through either a private entity or would, would there be additional options if it wasn't through a private entity?
My understanding, the element due to this, is that the district could provide the service, they provide it, but if you can't contract with a private company.
So I guess, what would, what would need to happen for, for them to be able to provide that service?
Could you not contract with the county to provide? That's not a public entity or a private entity, that's a public entity.
It's a question for the district's attorney. I'm sorry, they're not, they're not here.
Would it be something we could research as an option?
We could, but I can't, again, I don't have the district here or the district's attorney here. So, I mean, that would be a fourth entity that would need to sit around this table.
And it's probably a relative for this year, but something we could certainly look at, you know, taking the source of funding, just, just keep following around.
Sure.
It would seem to me that if, if you can't contract with a private entity, but you can contract with the county, and pay the county to provide EMS service, and EMS and the county can do whatever they want, as far as a contract. I don't know why that couldn't be done this year.
Again, I think there's a lot of research that would have to be done, but I would think crucial distinction would be if the county is the one selecting from the RFPs, the hospital is effectively taken out of the decision-making process.
Which they need to be.
So, right, so there would be no, again, I think there's a lot of research that would have to be done on that fact, but it is something I think is worth looking at.
It is worth looking at, because it is a provision under the Texas Health and Safety Code. Well, what can be done? What kind of, how many you guys want to research? When did you have the budget due? Are you saying?
October 1.
So same as us.
We need to be making decisions yesterday.
Senator Mayor, one of the things we had talked about in the smaller meeting we had when we set this up, was that with the timing of the RFPs, there probably wasn't going to be a transition by October 1st anyway. And you guys were going to check with AMR about extra time if necessary. Obviously, if they get the, if they're the selected contractor, it's irrelevant. If they're not, there's probably going to have to be a little transition type of something. Have you guys talked about that at all with them?
Not yet.
May I?
Sure.
I just wanted to follow up on something that Mr. Jackson said a moment ago. That whole 60-30, that hadn't, that was way before probably anybody around here. And I, I think that was just a starting place, because they had no idea where to start as far as negotiating numbers and amounts. So true, I mean, the calls that come within the city limits could be from anybody. I, I agree with you on that. So I just wanted to clarify, that was done prior to, and that was just a starting point when they started that.
Right, it was just address or it was?
It was just kind of, okay, let's, let's start with the call, you know, the number of calls within each of them. So, I mean, that was just their starting point. But I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, that wasn't something that...
Because the reality is between eight and five, almost every county resident is here town. And so if something happened to them between eight and five?
True.
They were going to be picked up?
They were still called within, I mean, they were still within the city limits when that call was made, correct. But where they live and where they came from, we didn't have that.
It was sort of been done based on pickup points, obviously, because that's what would have been in the system.
Right.
Oh, it's always.
So, again, just wanted to clarify that that wasn't a, that was done prior, whenever, five years ago, whenever they started this contract.
Understood, thank you.
Can I ask a question? So before AMR, Rio County had their own ambulance service, right, Mr. Aldera? What happened with that? Why does the county not have that service? Or does anybody know?
We couldn't provide a full service like they do.
Based on?
We wanted to, we wanted to provide a better service for, for the citizens. So we had to go with a private that would have everybody.
Was it based on finance or was it based on employees?
The way we had it was volunteers. Sometimes volunteers didn't show up.
Okay.
So we had to do something to, to have an EMS and would be efficient to work with the, the citizens of, of Pierce Hall, the Indian, the whole county.
The, the people that were doing EMS were volunteers? I thought they were county employees.
There were, we had some employees, but most of them were volunteers. We had volunteers that showed up.
They have a company yield and it's working fine with the, as far as I know, the South, the South, they have their own EMS. Why don't we try it again? I mean, after this contract, we need time to back that program. I think we would work for the county. That's what I, the counties have it. They don't, they don't hire private ambulance. They don't pay private ambulance, they have their own.
Talking for the future.
For the future, yes. My knowledge is just too soon to bring it in, but it's never too late.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the South don't have a city council or anything. They take over everything. You are the cops, they're all county.
That's the city council, that'll have safety.
Yes.
Rio County had full-time EMS day and volunteers at night. So, so they actually had a crew all day long. Six to six, I believe. And then 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and it was all volunteers.
How long ago was that?
Excuse me?
How long ago was that?
Uh, when, I, I guess when they started hiring.
Hiring.
It's been years.
AMR's been here for five years, but we had Sacred Heart for two years before then.
Right.
Does anybody have the budgetary numbers that the county was spending on that service when it was in fact?
I'm just curious, what the different, what the county was spending on a basically half-time EMS versus what was spending?
I, I don't.
Being before my time.
It was before a lot of our times, I can tell you. You know, things I've heard in passing, and I know these are things that are obviously not necessarily representative examples, but I'm not sure I would advise my client to run a service that was run as well as the county EMS was. Take that for what you. Again, there's a reason that my client decided to, let's bring in professionals from out of town, because we couldn't necessarily get the right staff in town. And we just thought that by paying, it would provide the citizens with a better service. And it was not necessarily what can we do that's cheapest? It was a combination of what can we afford and what is best for the people. And that, with the knowledge that we had learned from running our own EMS services, what led us to eventually say, you know what? We're going to try the private side. Did I say anything that misstated? Anything anybody can remember?
No. And the RFP that you guys issued, what are the provisions that are in that RFP that require them? It's a flat rate and then they give whatever they get from their insurance is two? Or if they're collecting from Medicare, Medicaid insurance or whatever for that ambulance ride, is it reducing the amount that we make?
No, they collect on top.
So they get that 588,000 plus, some chunk above it?
Again, basically is what we're doing is we're subsidizing to an extent their, their operations.
Or we're paying on what their operations cost, and we're not, we're not requiring them really to go after the billing part of it.
That's an argument.
Are they required to give us, are they required to give you any amount on what they're collecting, what, what they're doing with the insurance, how much they're trying to collect for those rides? So they may not be trying to collect anything, because they're already making everything they need to.
Again, that's a legitimate question.
Just judge me.
Sure. Going along with what you said, basically, by doing this, what you're paying for is to make sure that there's an EMS in our county to answer the call, 911 calls. I mean, that's pretty much what you're paying for, is the way, Joseph, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's pretty much why having this contract is, is, again, we've requested two and a backup and all of that. But that's basically what you're paying for. And I know we discussed it the last, the smaller meeting about is, if nobody provides it, will somebody come? Because it is, it's a business. And, and it can be, they can make a lot of money. I mean, you know, but will somebody be here? And again, if my mom calls and she needs an ambulance and there's nobody dedicated here, and something happens, sure, I'm going to be upset. So I mean, you know, you've got the emotional side and you've also got the financial side of it all. But the whole thing we're paying for is to, just to reassure that, to make sure that there's an EMS in our county. They still bill, from what I understand, they still bill anybody that they touch.
Okay, so that, that's what I was seeing. So they, they built in, they're having to build into that contract, because 35% are insured, or whatever the number of people are. So they're having to build in for indigent, but we have a, a hospital district that's supposed to provide indigent services. And it looks like we're paying for that from the general fund to cover that indigent portion, because they're not collecting for those people. And so that's got to be built in that contract somewhere. So from a business standpoint, if, if the county didn't have a contract, the city didn't have a contract, and a private company came in here, then that private company, the indigent claims will be able to go up the hospital district and get that money. But now we're paying for it out of the general fund, because it's already, they've got to be covered in there because they're not, obviously not taking bills to the hospital. Are the ambulance rights?
Maybe we can put in the contract, that we give the county gets a percentage of what they bill. I'll make it a little, put in the contract, get a percentage of what they bill. Because they do bill a lot. Sure, it's a probability. And then we're paying them, 300,000.
600,000.
Does we get a percentage of what they bill?
20%.
We get some money back.
The bidding, have you chose?
No, we just got the bid today. We just got it today, we need it for real. And by next week, we should make a choice.
One week?
Yes. I will go out on a limb, but now that everybody's here, it's, I guess eventually the county's going to have to put up the bill for the EMS. But while we're here, that's what I'm asking with the city of Pierce Hall. They can contribute whatever amount they can. Because eventually, I'm pretty sure that, and this is me speaking by myself, that the county probably will pick up a bit more. And then I'm thinking about the citizens of the county, of Pierce Hall and Dilly.
So when you're saying, you know, that you're hoping that Pierce Hall and Dilly can contribute, is there an amount that you're, that you're?
Me personally, I would, I would leave it up to you all, to whatever you think you can afford. Because again, like then, the person saying, you're on a tight budget right now, I can understand that, and also maybe the same thing. So I'll leave it up to the council, whatever you have, if you can afford it, also, and also, maybe the same thing. I won't put an amount here.
No, I mean, there's not like an ideal amount that you're, that maybe the county's thinking of?
Whatever you want.
you're on tight budget right now, I can understand that, and also maybe the same thing. So, I'll leave it up to the council. Whatever you have to give, you can afford yourself. And also, it's the same thing. I won't put an amount here.
No, I mean, there's like an ideal amount that you're, that maybe the county is thinking of?
Whatever you want.
76.
No, I wouldn't have a part of saying, you know, I want, you see, the person paying so much money, I'll leave it up to you all.
What about you and, you know, just looking at it and thinking about it just from our perspective? We just set our tax rate. And so, the opportunity, I mean, the only way we can come up with more money is let people go. I mean, really, the way that we look at it right now, so there's almost no way. But just a thought, and again, realizing, being equity that we talked about, and we all probably have certain thoughts about that. What about, and I guess this is my question for you is, you know, maybe in six months from now, we can get together again, see what our budget's like. We really believe that we're going to gain some ground this year. We can't budget that in because it's not concrete, not abstract, but we really do. And in the spirit of cooperation to assist in some level, and we appreciate the fact that you didn't put a figure on it, but just legitimately get together with the group and go, okay, guys, we made some gains this year and we can support. Again, the fact that this is just one year means it's something we can look at annually. And being a little bit prepared, what we think this time next year, we're going to be a whole lot better off with some things that we've got up there. But if the county would consider doing that and taking the full run of that at this particular time, I'd be happy to, as I said, we need six months down the road with the group focused on seeing what we can do to help subsidize.
Well, yeah.
We can hold it to that, there's a little bit left in six months. But that being, we can have to gain that, you know, come back in six months and revisit with all the gaming and kind of shaping all that.
Dean, if we made some ground, I mean, can we make a line item adjustments?
Oh, well, because you have to answer the question. We know we're going to have some additional sales tax revenues this year in the two areas, the annex. We don't know exactly what those are going to be. Six months, we'll have a little bit better idea of what's going to be happening there, really. So, yeah, you know, if we don't have HEB, 3AD agreements and all these other things that none of us knew existed that jump up and bite us every time we turn around, if we don't see a bunch of that this year, then, I mean, yeah, we'd be in a whole lot better shape right now to have to just pay off some of those. So, sure, you know, six months is, maybe we found most of the snakes. Of course, somebody told me I've only been here two and a half years and she's been here five and she's still fighting them. So, I'm kind of scared of the next two and a half years. Yeah, there's always, that's, I mean, that's a legitimate, legitimate offer.
We could do that. So, yeah, come back and revisit with all of it. Six months, I would, we do appreciate it right now. Also, the same thing with the building. And it's going to hard for you all, but then we can revisit with all of it. But we can help a bit.
Could we start looking into the eventual, putting the EMS service on the... What about City District?
Be creating one through both. Again, it'll be up to my client to decide if that's something they wanted to do. But obviously, if they instructed me to do that, then that is what I would do.
So, going to county level?
Madam Mayor, I would, I think the best thing I've worked on this, you know, this is, again, this, we're talking about Rio County, the best thing for everybody, I think the best thing for everybody is to look into the option of the county contracting, or the hospital district contracting the county to do it. I mean, that gets rid of the private, the private portion of that. Because the people are already paying, they're already getting taxed for a service. And emergency response care, I mean, that's a legitimate purpose under that, under that tax. So, that's the option I would like to see as far, to see if that could be.
Well, I don't think the district is going to, the district is already providing the hospital. That's the emergency service, it's not transportation. But I'm not going to argue it here.
No, I don't understand. How much money does the hospital district have reserved?
I don't know at all.
About eight million bucks? What was it in the paper a year ago?
No.
No?
No.
Can that be requested? That information gets away with tax dollars. So, it should be requested.
You know, the county's taking every penny that they're getting from the citizens, they're reinvesting in the citizens immediately. We're taking every penny that we get from the citizens, we're reinvesting in the citizens immediately. So, when it comes to, if this is something that could fit under the hospital tax and there's money sitting in their reserves, I mean, that seems fair to the citizens to look at that as a source to make that. Of course, that's their decision, and their decision, and their decision is not mine.
One thing I do give credit to Mr. Williams and the hospital is that they took over the airlife, $48,000, the Congress put it there.
The district did do that. They were able to do that, though, because the helicopters do not bring patients to the hospital. They don't report to the hospital.
So...
Yeah, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry. The hospital district funds a membership for all residents of Rio County with air care to be transported to San Antonio if they need it. But air care does not bring patients to the hospital. So, they're not a referral source. Any patient that's going to be on the helicopter is not going to be treated at this hospital. They're picked up from the hospital and taken to San Antonio? Or they're taken directly from the site to San Antonio?
So, if there's an accident on like February 5th and a helicopter brings them to the hospital, that's not covered?
No.
They take them straight to San Antonio?
Helicopters, any patient in a helicopter can't be cared for at this hospital.
On those contracts, again, sorry, whoever gets the contract, is it too late to charge them a percentage for what they bill? Can we put that clause in there?
I don't think we do.
That can be possible, whoever gets the contract. Can we put that clause in there, is it too late?
I don't think we do that.
Six months?
Six months.
Is that where we're kind of walking away from this? The six-month review?
Yeah, but we can, but then, I'd like to meet in the way 200 hours. I'd like to maybe do it again next month.
You want to do that?
Maybe we need to stay working the data.
Yes, sir.
Well, I can force them to do one deal.
Yeah.
We're pretty new building.
You say next time again?
Yeah.
So, when we come back in a month, would we have a follow-up on, for example, whether that would be a term that can be negotiated with regards to the county getting that percentage?
Again, the question I would have was, would that in any way run afoul of bidding laws, local code? I just don't know the answer to that offhand.
It seems like that would be a contract term that would be negotiable.
Right. I just, again, since it affects price, I don't feel comfortable saying yes or no at this point.
But we would have an answer like next month if there is one?
Ideally, yes. Because I would hope we would have an agreement between then now and then.
Yes.
So, we want to throw out a date for next month so everybody can start trying to plan. There's a lot of people trying to get the same rate going up. And we wait months longer to set that date. This one's on the first Wednesday. I know Wednesday nights are tough because of church. Does anybody meet on the first Tuesdays? We don't. You guys know, you guys will look out the first Tuesday. So, that would be the second, October 2nd. No, no. Yeah, that would be the second.
We need to mean when all the budgets are done.
That'll be done, ours will be done. Everybody's having to be done by then. Yeah, the first is new budget. So, October 2nd, take more work for you guys? October 2nd, at what time? Six? At the Dilly City Hall?
All we're trying to do is provide better service for our patients, you know. But we need help. It's all we have.
You know, thank your body, thank you for that. This is great, being together. We talk this thing out. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We need to make a motion.
Yeah, everybody's got clothes.
Your question before we, okay, you need to entertain a motion to adjourn, please. I said adjourn. Second, on favor?
Can you guys just...